Call the meeting to order, stand and recite the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Let's pray. We ask you for wisdom as we begin this meeting. We acknowledge that we need your wisdom and insights as we welcome your presence among us. Guide us in our discussions and decisions, helping us to seek what is best for all involved. Brief moment for your own intentions. Motion to approve the agenda. The motion seconded to approve the agenda, is there any discussion to that motion?
Pray minds think like.
I have a line through the more greater purchase options, that's going to be opt agenda then? Okay, okay. So, is that okay with Ted and Doreen, you made the motion second to just go to G two at the end? So include that. Any other discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all of them favor say aye. Oh, same time, same sign. Opportunity for public comments, anybody from the public here to comment? From the public here to comment, not seeing anybody, so let's start with the Emergency Management, Management Veteran Services Henderson.
Good morning Commissioners. Ah, it's usually about fifteen minutes. Well, it depends, sometimes it gets long winded. Good morning Commissioners, Sean Henderson, Mead County Emergency Management and Veteran Services. Uh, so you had to respond a couple of times in the past thirty days. One of them bled into October, but you know, we're, we're just kind of doing the last thirty days. A house fire September tenth in Blackhawk, unfortunately. This family lost their, total loss of their home. Um, they have some family in town and we got the Red Cross to help them for the initial contact. And, uh, there's a lot of organizations around town such as the American Legion in Piedmont, that's helping them, um, with donations and things like that, help them, help them a little bit. And, uh, we have the burn banning effect, which I'll get into a little bit more here in a second, but we actually had to respond the other day, was that Monday? What is today, Tuesday? Last week, losing track of my days. Um, there was a grass fire out there, um, I guess that would have been west of Buffalo Chip, and that, or east rather, um, uh, east of Sturgis, well, in Sturgis. And, uh, there was a, a burn ban violation, a lady was using her burn pit out there and she had a lot of debris around and I'm sure you saw on the news and things like that, but. Yeah, fortunately, um, our, our people were able to get it out very, very, very fast and, um, it was very minimal, less than an acre, three quarters of an acre, I think. I know that was discussed, but I wasn't. And, and they advised her right there on the spot as well, about the violation and the citation. Happened to drop a little bit. Anyway, um, I'll, that'll segue into the, uh, yesterday. Um, I was working, I'm working close with Pennington County, the, the, the fire restriction, we're now in stage two, based on the droughts and what have you. And, um, so published, well, at least between Pennington County and Mead County, social media, we've posted stuff on Facebook and things like that. And, uh, Pennington County with the, um, Forest Service is kind of consolidating all the information, online and, uh, there's some speci- I won't get into the specifics, but essentially we've tightened up the restrictions on fires and smoking and welding, explosives, you know, that kind of stuff. So it's pretty, pretty tight, we're, we're at high risk, um, unfortunately. Uh, if you need information additional, I can forward it to you. Okay, anything, uh, Emergency Management side of the house that you need? Oh, we also, yeah, one more thing, it didn't make it on my agenda, apologize. Nor did this because it came out yesterday. But the S D five one one, um, there's a demonstration on October seventeenth. Um, I forward some of that invite to some of the, I think Troy, um, Pat and J J, I think. Did, did they contact you? The S D five one one people, did they get ahold? They said they were going to get ahold of you individually and add you to the list of names. I added Gary because, yeah, I just thought it was appropriate to have, uh, the Commission Chair as well on the list of, um, people that have the authority to. Well, I guess we'll find out exactly what that means on the seventeenth. If we press a button and it closes off the county roads, uh, throughout the whole county or, or what? And we, we also need to talk, um, probably, uh, eventually, if we're going to split the county in half as far as that function, um, to, to cut off the roads. Because it's such a large county and Pennington does that because a lot of theirs is mountainous and then they have the plains as well, so they split theirs in half. And I thought that might be something worth to consider as well. But, or if it's even necessary. Anything else from Emergency Management?
Yeah, so you're talking on a five one one with your closing roads, basically?
Correct, um, so the, the state is, uh, you had to sign up for it and coincidentally, right when I started, which was a year ago, um, they opened it up to the counties and I happened to see it and I said, well, I'll sign Mead County up. I don't know what it is, but I added us to the list. So we were one of the first people to sign up for it without even knowing what it was and.
Well, credit for honesty, so.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, yeah, if anything, I'm very honest and open, but anything. Uh, so the, essentially, um, the last kind of meeting I had was a Zoom call and they weren't entirely sure how they were going to enact it. And, and the whole point of it is instead of, um, well, we'll have the ability to shut off all the county roads because we have a lot of rural roads, obviously, and people like to bypass when they close down ninety, for instance. And, um, you know, that, that puts a lot of emergency responders at risk to go rescue people when they.
So, yeah, so my, you know, I, I don't, I think if you're going to do it, you're going to have to probably split the county. There's plenty of times, and the hard thing is going to be how do you split it? Because there's plenty of times down wrong, but it's not bad, all yet Sturgis.
It might even be a quad thing.
Yeah, it might be, um, um, you know, the I ninety corridor until you get to like New Underwood. But then there's a demarcation to Toford where.
Exactly, that's, yeah, definitely, that Toford is definitely.
So, yeah, it doesn't make any sense to me to be shutting the roads down wide. Brown Blizzard.
I agree, one hundred percent. And, um, I'd like, uh, more to get on that Zoom call if you, so that way everybody's kind of on the same page and then, um, I know we can make that happen because the last I heard, their goal was to, uh, enact it by, you know.
But the decision as far as how we split it doesn't need to be made on the seventeenth, that's just an introductory meeting.
Correct, it's like a second introductory meeting. They had an initial one that was just really high level. And they said, hey, we're going to, we're going to have this capability. We're not sure how we're going to launch it, but it's coming and we're going to have a future meeting. You should invite your, your other people.
I know I've gotten some emails and so I, on that, but, uh, yeah, I get a lot of emails, so.
Well, after that presentation, um, if we can, let's, let's go ahead and.
Yeah, let's sit down and talk, but let's also get Commissioner Liggett on those emails as well, just since he's a highway liaison and I think that'd be a good idea to have you on there as well. And I think, yeah, you said they already are.
They were my first thoughts.
Yeah, they're already on, so that's, that's the important one. But as far as Commissioners, I think, uh, myself and Commissioner Liggett, would it be appropriate?
Yep.
Okay, well, you want to kick me off during, that's fine. I don't, I don't, I don't care. I don't care, no, I'm not saying that, I'm just, I, since I was already on the emails, the only reason. Or would you, it doesn't matter to me, I just thought.
I don't think there's a limit, some have many, many, much smaller counties than have ten.
Right.
And.
I don't think you have to worry about a quorum if you guys are just all appealing by Zoom.
Then, yeah, okay, certainly. I just, so Doreen, make sure Doreen's on there as well.
Yep, you bet.
You want on there Ted and Talbot?
Anybody else, Rhea? No, just kidding.
Well, just don't close my roads down. Only Talbot.
Just because Gary can't get to work, I don't want.
We can just segregate Talbot's road, we can maybe do that.
Just, just one road? Find out.
The county roads are not better than the highways when they close them.
Well, the, the problem is we do that knowing, I mean, I take the backroads no matter what, but, but, uh, but the, the problem is, yeah, the people assume, uh, state roads closed, they have the idea that they can go via county road. And that's, that just, the word needs to get out that you're putting your life in danger by doing so.
And others.
Yeah.
It's weird down in. Might shut the roads down. Blackhawk gets, the roads aren't bad, it's just that they want to turn the traffic around because they don't want them going through. So, you know, the interstate's actually pretty good to like Piedmont, Toford, but they shouldn't. But, so sometimes you, you get people that drive up Elk, uh, X amount of road and go over the street, but. Troy went out a lot of times last year to get people. All of the above.
Oh, right now. Okay, let's. Okay, I guess that's it for the Emergency Management side of the house. I'll switch over to the Veterans side, um, little lower numbers, uh, because I was at my convention, so that's the only, it probably would have been higher than the previous month, seems to be the trend. Uh, I will point out, um, that I met this right, this is not on my agenda, but I just thought it would be a good news story. Um, I had the honor of meeting, um, a Navy veteran that's over, she's a resident over at the Community Living Center at Fort Meade and she turns a hundred and two years old this month. And she was a, a Navy Waves, which stands for Women Accepted for Voluntary Emergency Service. And their goal during War Two was to free the men up so they could go do sea service in the Navy. So they call Rosie the Riveter, you know, is her little nickname. And, uh, I'm trying to coordinate between the Black Hills Pioneer and do an article on her for Veterans Day and I figured, uh, she's, she's sharp as a tack too, about this tall, but. Sweet lady. Thanks. Yeah, it's just, you know. I, a lot of people saw it, I was, it's a little embarrassing. Yeah, a little bit. Um, yeah, that's it, that's really about it, um, yeah, that's it.
Any other questions for Mr. Henderson?
Thank you.
Bet.
Have a good one.
Equalization, the Equalization Department, anything to report?
Good morning Commissioners, Rea Crane, Director of Equalization. We finished up, I should say, the appraisers finished up the reappraiser, reappraisal building permits with four hundred and eleven inspections. We are now on to just building permit inspections for the remainder of the year. Um, that four hundred and eleven inspections was actually done with two appraisers gone for school for a week. Uh, Deborah did advertise the administrative assistant position. As of this morning, we have twenty-two applicants, so that's exciting. Um, even better, we have a new hire for the appraiser position that starts October fourteenth, which is very, very exciting. She started off as a fee appraiser in Montana and moved to the Department of Revenue in Montana. She was very fun to visit with, she talks the same lingo, she, she knows, she knows the gig, so that's exciting. Sending two people down? Yes. That are both rock star, well, one is a rock star for sure and we're assuming this one is going to be also. Yes. Uh, we will be, uh, finishing our twenty twenty-four transfers for sales ratio and getting them uploaded into Actiomatics so we can start the final sales ratio study for the twenty twenty-five assessment period. That will, we usually get that done about mid-December, end of December, so looking forward to that. I'm here for any questions y'all have. Has dropped significantly. Anya's just being a hard nose. Now that's a, yes, no, it sure hasn't.
Any questions, comments for Miss Crane?
Thank you.
Off Facilities.
Good morning, Commission. Ben, Ben Petrako, Mead County Facilities Director here, and I just had a quick report on some of our September workload. I don't have a lot to report other than what the K P I shows, um, not a lot of major stuff. For the month of September, we had forty-seven work orders. We had our typical, a lot of H V A C type repairs on Law Center and Erskine. Couple heat pumps went down in the Law Center and we've had a few of the, uh, electronic thermostats start to fail over there that were replaced probably six years ago, I think. Couple of those have started to have problems where they're glitching out and dying, so. You know, this is really the first electronic type like that that I've ever seen in our buildings, so I'm assuming it's kind of like everything else, there's probably a lifespan that, I don't know exactly what it should be for those, but I know I've got two that have died and then another one that's starting to act up. And they're not cheap, they're like seven hundred dollars a piece. So hopefully it doesn't just keep continuing, but, um, I'm still working on the completion of the, uh, radio notification piece at the inning Tower site. I was waiting on one part for quite a while, but I've got it in hand now, so I'm actually planning on getting out there tomorrow and try to get that along with our, um, generator oil change in service. And then we're going to go ahead and replace the door and the door frame on that enclosure out there because it's just deteriorated to the point where it's, we, we usually try to repaint it every year and kind of reseal everything, but it's time for a new one. So I went ahead and purchased one for that and we'll just switch that out.
You don't go up to that tower by yourself, do you? I mean, you got Jamie out there with you, don't you?
Sometimes I do, depending on what we're working on, tomorrow we'll both go for that deal.
Because I don't think you ought to do that alone.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I, I think you need to always have somebody there.
That's probably a good idea and it's.
Ink Doreen's, Ink Doreen's volunteered right along with you.
Yeah, I think I'm playing mom here, but, um.
Well, I mean, that, that kind of goes for a lot of the stuff we do out there, working on some of the, the rural highway shops and stuff. It's always, if you're going to get up on a roof or something.
You need to have something, two people.
Yeah, we, we try to do that if possible, so definitely keep that in mind. Um, on the highway shop side of things, I've been working with Troy and his guys a little bit out there trying to locate the electrical and water lines underground for the trench that they're wanting to put in for their water connection, their new water tap. I don't, I don't know if you guys started trenching out there yet or. Did they ever locate those last two? Found them nice, okay, that's good.
Normally I don't find things till you dig.
Yeah, right, well, we're trying to prevent that. There's, there's quite a bit of stuff we got to cross out there, so. But I feel pretty good about, we found, I think, everything. I mean, there might be a surprise plumbing thing, but I think we got all the electrical at least, so. Yeah, because they're actually crossing the primary, um, Black Hills Power and Light primary line out there. We got to make sure we don't hit that thing.
Ted probably knows where it's at.
Probably fixed it before.
Well, yeah, this one's actually goes, I mean, it's on our property out there. It's kind of, it's kind of a weird setup, but, um.
Dan, is there a lot of changes inside the building to hook that other one up or not?
Yeah, there's going to be, I mean, if we're talking trying to keep it all separate from the old water system, which would be ideal, you know, it'd be pretty much new plumbing to whatever is, is tied to that water. So you're, you know, you got to get into the building somehow where it's freeze protected and then, you know, plum to where you're going to do any sinks or drinking fountains or any of that type of stuff. We don't have that a hundred percent figured out yet. Right now he's trying to mainly get the, the lines over there, you know. And we'll help, help out with that as much as we can. I mean, if it comes to, they might have to get a professional plumber in there to do some, some of that. What else we got? We were able to get all the, the asphalt parking lots, um, cracked, sealed, sealed coated and lines repainted, which was nice because we were starting to deteriorate in some spots. I think that seal coating will help solidify that parking lot for a while, hopefully.
Did we do the one in the street out here?
Yes. I had them go ahead and do that, just our parking that we own right there along the. Other than that, we've just been trying to finish up a lot of our outdoor fall type projects, including retaining wall staining, we're going to try to get done. Drinkler line system, winterization and blowout for all the buildings. Our annual generator services that we got to do. Three, three big ones here and then we got Sly Hill and Anning.
Ben, I was curious though, insurance adjuster looked at the courthouse roof, did he make a determination on that?
He hasn't made a final determination because we're still waiting on a couple more, um, price quotes that are, again, they're not really solid bids, but they're quotes. He wanted to know what those were from a couple other contractors before. But it didn't sound, it didn't sound very promising on the hail stuff because there, there actually wasn't a, time that they installed that roof, they didn't install the top coverboard like they do now that helps deflect a lot of that hail on top of the insulation below the rubber membrane. So without that, I mean, it's pretty, pretty typical for those to, that hail hits and a lot of times it doesn't make a hole right away, but it'll dent the insulation underneath it. And then over time, it, uh, dries and cracks right there and you get a little, just a little pinhole or a little tear. So, I mean, he didn't say, he didn't say one way or another for sure if there'd be any kind of compensation, but I'm going to stay with him on the numbers. See what they'll do for us. On that note, I've got a couple, couple other options that, I mean, we can just sit down and discuss later for the Law Center roof probably. If I've got a rubber membrane, um, option for that, it's considerably cheaper than metal. I mean, like, like half. But it cosmetically, of course, doesn't look like the decorative ribbed metal that's on there now. So I, at some point I'd like to sit down and discuss that with whoever and see what your guys' thoughts are on that. It's still at like a twenty-year warranty roof. But, yeah, it's basically a rubber membrane, just like what we have on the flat roofs. With, it'll have snow guards along the bottom as well, but. It, it doesn't look bad to me, but it's not the same as, you know, what you see there now.
Well, it might fill the holes. I, I was wondering. I, I was wondering if you and Pat and I, Gary, we need to get together and see about the, the contract for the utilities and all those costs with the city. I believe that contract may have expired or is due to expire, or the costs involved, I'm not sure, are escalating, uh...
Think we're locked in till twenty-seven now, right?
I believe it is, twenty-twenty-seven.
But I'm not sure we have, um, the right costs.
Ben and I did do some research on that, and I think the only thing that we narrowed it down to that we could potentially be missing was phone lines. And the phone lines Tony and Ben can elaborate on is a very difficult...
Hard to break up what you could actually bill them for just their portion of that bill. Basically, it comes down to, I don't think it'd be very much.
But I don't think we're billing for the water and sewer utilities.
Yes, we are.
We are, we are, yes.
Yeah, we're getting the...
MDU, electricity, water?
Yeah, the bigger stuff, yeah, gas. Yeah, I think when we went through it, the only thing would be a, potentially a part of that Blue Peak bill, but like I said, I don't, most of the lines are county-related, there'd be a very small portion of that. And then, of course, we're still trying to do the, the billing for any repairs that involve their equipment over there. Trying to get twenty percent billed towards like the HVAC stuff and anything like that that involves their office.
Or, uh, which, I don't know, they got the money.
Yeah, that's something that you guys could talk about. I don't, I don't know exactly how the contract works on the, on the roof.
I'm not sure, Kevin mentioned to me because he says, you know, they're kind of broke.
That sounds like it.
I haven't heard that.
Well, there's, there's definitely things that we could get together and discuss, even if the county... I mean, we could, we, there's a lot of moving parts that we have with the city.
Yeah.
It wouldn't hurt for us to sit down, I mean, I don't know if we have for, I've been on the commission, which is... It sure wouldn't hurt to sit down and discuss with the city. Kind of clear some of this stuff up, because I think there's, everyone has questions. Okay, yeah, yeah, anytime. Guess that's kind of all I had for my September report.
Any questions, comments for Facilities? Thanks, Ben. Uh, Human Resources, Ms. Brandsroot.
Good morning, Deborah Brandsroot with Human Resources for Mead County. Um, posted our monthly report of turnover and such for Mead County. Um, small activity, we had good interviews this past month and also hired another lady, I think she's coming out of North Dakota, but she's here in South Dakota for corrections, who's starting today as well.
Oh, well, good.
So, and I think Tanya is probably looking at a couple of the candidates that we also interviewed for Real, uh, Real Property Appraiser. There were some good candidates that we had, so just kind of mixing it up a little bit, and hopefully we'll have some good hires this quarter. Uh, nothing new, other than we did get the Wellmark contract signed and submitted, and also the Massa contract signed and submitted. We're beginning preparation for open enrollment for the benefits, the end of this month. We'll start on the twenty-third of October and go through November first. Um, we most likely will be doing a paper open enrollment this year because our E system that we've been using since 2022 has been purchased by Navigator, and they are right in the middle of a transfer. I don't know why they're planned to do it during open enrollment season. Could've waited until after the first of the year, but, um, anyway. So we may be doing paper for the employees for benefits, and then Tina and I will be the learn-how-to-use navigator as we move into November. That's about all the things that we've been preparing for.
Questions, comments for Human Resources? Thank you, Ms. Ben. Planning Department.
Morning, Tanya Vig, Planning Department. Everything is uploaded on I-Docs. Um, the building permits have maintained the same, we're not losing or gaining, so which is good news. Um, we did have two final plots that came through, which will put thirty-two lots on the market. We have Bridle Ridge, which will be nine-acre lots, and then Horizon Three Twenty Estates, which will be twenty-four new lots with asphalt roads to, within the subdivision, which is nice. Um, no new pending subdivisions yet. The only thing new is Max and I will attend South Dakota Planners Association in Box Elder at the box. Lawrence County Director and Butte County Director and I will present at that conference. We're gonna do a session on plot review process, zoning versus non-zoning. Interesting. Any questions for me at all, or?
Questions, comments?
Yep, thanks.
IT Department.
Morning, Commissioners, Tony Cummings, IT Department. I don't have a whole lot to report. September is, um, on average for work orders. Um, or for the KPI stuff, our cyber hygiene report and malicious domain. Um, PDFs were attached for your, for your attention. Um, we're pretty good on those kind of things, keeping ahead of, uh, all the malicious URLs that are coming into us. Um, we did receive the bulk purchase of our twenty-four computers. Clayton is currently deploying those to the different departments. And I believe Deeds is completed, and equalization and planning will be completed today. And then he will move on to the, the following departments. Uh, we do have a new printer getting deployed on, on Monday in Estates Attorney's Office. Um, one of the old ones over there has been replaced, it's on lease for the county, so nothing, uh, nothing too crazy there. Um, Ria, would you mind switching over to, please? Um, you know, I just want to touch base on, um, the recent MFA, Two FA implementation for our email client that we forced our employees to use. Um, it's been a huge success. Um, along with that, you know, it comes with the reporting end of it from my side of it. Ria, just switch that over. Yeah, if you could switch the laptop to, or the camera? Nope, too good. I'd probably switch that back. Um, so just, this is really less than a twenty-four-hour period of malicious attempted logins. You can see Max was the flavor of the day yesterday. See a couple of Commissioners highlighted there. And that just because they enforce the, uh, the reasoning behind the implementing the MFA and Two FA. So all those malicious sign-ins from all those different countries, once they know your email address, they'll plug that into an automated program, and they'll just keep guessing passwords over and over and over till it guesses correctly. Again, it's really important, really important not to reshare passwords reused for different applications.
Is my name on there?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, my God.
Nothing you did, it's just somebody in France and somebody in, um, GM, wherever GM is. Bengal or India somewhere.
Oh.
Has your email account and is trying to guess your password.
You, you know, that's, that's the thing that came up on the authorization that I was gonna ask you about. Because when I put in my email address, it said that, that account did not exist.
It, you might have...
So somebody is fooling around.
It might have been at the same time somebody was attempting it and locked it temporarily. I don't have it set to lock out accounts for obvious reasons.
Yeah.
I mean, if I did that, we would never have anybody logging into email. Um, this is just a fact of, you know, it's just, it's internet, it is what it is, I mean. But the more things that we have in place to try and prevent access to county email, obviously the better. And the start of the process with the MFA and Two FA.
So just to clarify, this is not, you know, there's a lot of, Max's name is on there a lot, but that's not something she did.
Nope.
Uh, her, her email was probably sold, picked up that day. Um, I know that, you know, in conversations with you, mine's shown up a lot, depends on the day.
Yep.
Um, so...
Depends on who's trying to get in where and what department they're trying to fish, spearfish, you know. Max, you know, is, is obviously the flavor of the day yesterday, a couple of other employees on there, you know. But I mean, any day, any day that, that list changes. It's, it's nothing Max did whatsoever, I just use that as an example. Um, we did ask Max to reset her password, which she did, just out of abundance of, you know, precaution.
So, just, just so everybody knows, it's not Max's...
No, nothing Max did, this is just, uh, other countries, other people in other countries trying to gain access to our county email accounts for nefarious reasons.
Or me. Or anyone else on the list.
Right.
I'm only on the list because I tried to... Yes, I got a new phone.
Oh, okay.
Thought I was malicious.
That's, that's basically it for me, any questions?
And you, you sent us the email, there's some scams going on with hurricane stuff.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Yeah, um, I, I tried to send out, you know, if anything that's prevalent in the news, you know, anything current affairs, I try and match something so that at least, you know, you'll get it from me first if you click it from me, okay? We'll address it, and we may have to do some security awareness training, you know, but I'd rather, obviously, the phishing testing be clicked rather than an actual email's coming in. So that just reinforces the training for the end users.
Any other questions for Cummings? Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Um, let's jump down to Auditor on our agenda, E1. September budget reports and session on that. About the overtime report by department. Have anything to add?
The, the only thing on that overtime report... The Sheriff's Office and the jail, Highway always the three. They're big, but we have more staff there, too, so it'd be interesting to see what percentage that is budgeted. Because one department could have, because they don't have very many employees, have what looks like not a lot of overtime, but be a huge portion of their budget. I don't know, I just was looking at that the other day, trying to figure out, okay, is that out of whack, you know? Ten percent? I can go back and look at the budget stuff, but... Well, I just, because my thought was, I was looking at it for like, general, if the general public's looking at it, they'll look like, okay, the Sheriff's Office is really out of whack, but it might be not a big percentage of their budget, or their budgeted, uh...
We did take a look at that, a lot of those are in line with budget communications and, and, and jail. That refreshed my memory. And they're, the Sheriff's Office is a little bit over, it looks like it'll probably come in a little bit over budget. Uh, those other two are more than likely gonna meet budget, or at least fairly close. Um, you're right, Talbot, there's a lot of things with, with budgets and, and the payroll on the budget that we need to take a look at, uh, but, but as far as budget's concerned, I think most of these are going to meet budget. I can't speak for Highway, I haven't delved into that as much, but, but I think that's gonna...
Well, and like I said, even putting that information out there, isn't that a large percentage? It's driven by, of course, the number of employees.
And the, the other thing is that it's, it's an alarming number in some cases, but it's, uh, it's the time and a half. So it's not just that the half the time is the extra time that would be paid. Someone would have to be out doing those hours, so that'd be getting paid. So it's the time and a half, so it's, it's... It's the more accurate way to report it, but same time, it, it does look a little bit...
Well, you know, we're all familiar with the staffing levels, but the general public is not. That's the problem.
Yeah, it's just a public perception question.
Any other questions, comments? Saying none, let's jump down to Highway, Troy.
In the middle of, good.
Good morning, Commissioners, Troy Eastman here with the Highway Department. Yeah, I guess it's just the normal traffic count stuff, here are our most recent recounts, I guess, because we're, we pretty much completed every road, and now we're, you know, going back through the list.
Sure. So like on Elk Creek Asphalt, this is a recount from the last time, from last year, months ago, just last year?
Yeah, yeah, some of the, uh, obviously the busier roads or where projects are coming up, we try to count them more frequently than others, I guess.
So, have we seen a large percentage increase?
Um, I would have to compare the numbers, to be honest with you. I'm not sure what it was the last time we counted them.
Did you happen to read the Pioneer? You probably don't see the Pioneer, but the Lawrence County Highway Superintendent did a cost analysis. Did any of you read that?
Did read it, yep, and we talked about it this morning.
Do, do you believe there's, uh, uh, do you believe that his analysis reflects the, the same cost level in, in Mead County, or do you think that's old data?
Well, I, I think that probably is representative of their county. I think our, our cost per mile is not five hundred thousand to pave it. Um, we just got an estimate for reconstruction, um, about a million a mile.
That's, I, I was wondering how come theirs was so much cheaper.
Um, their, their soil and subbase is a lot better than ours. And I think that's a big portion of it. Their, their road system is a lot more limestone-based rather than ours, where we have expansive clays on a lot of our slopes.
Interesting.
Uh, one million, is that, that's, that's completed work, that's not just cost, though?
So that, that was the last testament, uh, we just got one from, for Haynes. Uh, it was right about a million a mile for the reconstruction, which was cement-treated base and paving, so... Um, which I kind of assume that's gonna be the case for most of our roadways going forward. That seems eight hundred to a million a mile.
Yeah, I, that five hundred thousand really, uh...
So with that, yeah. With that said, we don't really know what all that five hundred thousand is.
No.
Get the cement base or any...
No, 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 no.
So we could, I mean, just paving possibly could be five hundred.
Yeah, I think if you just paved, it could be about, about that, but, um, I think our, any road that we would want to pave, or any road that does get paved, um, you know, we'd have to look at for either a realignment or, you know, vertical realignment, because if it's gonna get paved, it should be, you know, designed to be a travelable road at paved speeds. Um, and then the, the base, what happens like with Haynes, where Haynes was built on the old road bed, and that's the issue that we have today, is it's a failing road bed from the original gravel road, um, which has cost, you know, now it's cost more to fix. So there, the limestone roads that they have in Lawrence are obviously a better road section.
Well, I wanted to know in case any residents that read that story, it, it, it has been contrary to the million a mile that we have often quoted, and so... I'm no engineer, I didn't know why there would be such a difference.
I, I did like their numbers, um, I wish we could achieve it.
Yeah. I didn't mean to get you upset, but it's relative.
It is, it's a totally different, you know, geography as far as their county versus ours, too, just getting to our roads.
And I didn't know how much time they put in, 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 um, you know, grading, grading the roads on a continual basis and, and all those timelines. There are so many variables.
I don't know if he had numbers in there for the number of times. I think, I, I don't know whether they picked a road that was, you know, a five hundred ADT road or, or what they used for their base, um, but, and I think he went out to thirty years, if I remember.
Yeah.
Um, but, yeah, four hundred thousand to, to maintain a road seems like probably closer on a gravel road, but on a lower-volume road.
Any other questions on the traffic count? Any other questions on the traffic count? Uh, we also have a.
Yes, Deadwood Avenue. This is an ongoing project that started, uh, I think it was in twenty twenty-two that they began the Rapid City portion of Deadwood Avenue, North Deadwood Avenue. And obviously our road ties into Mead County there, so they need to use it as a detour. And uh, the only difference between this agreement and the previous agreement is that the city and county are both involved, because it's the county portion that's getting rebuilt now. So it's Pennington County, City of Rapid City, and then also the DOT, I believe, is providing the safety grant. So, um, I wasn't here for the first agreement, but they, as far as I know, it's the same thing, only with the addition of Pennington County included. And I do know that we went out before the project start to look at the condition of the road and monitor it, you know, whether we'd take pictures or a video of it to see if any damage happens during the project. And then they'll ultimately be responsible for the cost to fix it.
I'm assuming Ken went through.
Um, not recently, I guess. Uh, but I can, I can sure have him take a look at it to see if there's anything that stands out or should be included, I guess. I don't know who drafted the letter the first time, but they sent this to me, so it's not like we drafted this letter. So probably would be a good idea.
When are they gonna close that offer? Is it already closed?
Um, it's gonna bid here soon, so it's not gonna be built till next year sometime is what they're anticipating.
Then all the traffic going south of Ericson Ranch Road will have to go west on Peaceful Pines too.
Yeah, that's the only route.
So this doesn't need to be signed?
It could, it could be, you know, next meeting or whatever, if we need to discuss or.
Okay.
To make a change or think about it, whatever.
It'd be best if Ken took a look.
I agree.
Before we look at that. Um, anything else for, for highway department?
Uh, yeah, the one Troy and I met was the game fishing parks la- or this, this week, last week, I don't remember.
Yeah, last Monday.
Um, and we're working through the contract uh on, on what we're gonna do with Elk Vale Road up to the entrance and then to the top of the hill as well. So they're, um, they're still willing to pay for, for the upgrade and, and modifications to that road to make it um reversible with all the traffic. So we're working through those costs and they're, they're working on it. I think uh they are, we are gonna mag that road, I think maybe this week or next, and uh Game Fishing Parks is paying for that as well.
Anything else for highway department?
Just one thing on that road. You'll get a lot of truck traffic coming in off that ground.
Yeah.
Something neither of we need to monitor for, or whether, maybe even consider whether you want reduced speeds for.
Yeah, that's a good point there. Western's gravel pit there. I mean, we use it ourselves, so we know there's a lot of traffic besides us.
But is there?
They're only heading south.
Yeah, usually, but. Mm-hmm.
Is there, there's no load limits on there as of now? I mean, there'd be.
Not reduced or.
Not reduced.
Right.
Yeah, they had load limits on it before they rebuilt. They had reduced it substantially. They, they did this a couple of years ago. They kind of baited and switched this, because they said they're all gonna do it all in one, one season, put the job second on. There'd be a lot of traffic going on Peaceful Pines, but everybody'd be glad to get that road done. It's terrible.
Yeah, it is very bad. So it needs to be done.
Anything to add from Rich? Uh, Rich and Troy and I also met with the state DOT as far as secondary roads.
I haven't heard an update back. We are looking at the classification of the road, um, state or countywide, um, on recommendations from the DOT.
I mean, they basically said it's gonna be, you know, end of the year, early next year before, you know, they're gonna have time to really review or get, you know, make any progress from where we're at right now, other than uh what we need to do on our end if there are any changes with municipalities or, you know, just with our own road system since it was submitted.
Hey, anything else for highway?
Just one question that, uh, Phillips were gonna sell gravel out of their pit on New, off New Enhood Road.
Yep.
They were gonna go north. Have, have they been hauling a lot of gravel on that road? Has it, has it affected the condition of our pavement up there?
It hasn't helped. I mean, at that entrance, you can definitely see where it is, you know, taking a toll on the road. Um.
Did we have any kind of a haul agreement with them or?
No, we did not, because uh basically by the time we, you know, realized what was going on there and um, we did change the, the limit, we reduced it, but I mean, there was enough damage done. It's kind of hard to say who did what or, you know, pinpoint one group of, or one individual or one company. And there's multiple people that go into all these gravel pits. I mean, I know one guy owns it, but, you know, anybody could go buy gravel and haul it in and out of there. So it's, I don't know the best way to monitor all of that, but especially with a road that already is damaged to begin with, but it's quite obvious looking at their approach for what's happening.
I noticed, I don't know who, they hauled a bunch of gravel on the north side of uh Rochford Road going south from Duck Deer Mountain.
Mm-hmm.
And they use that, they use that gravel to, to gravel the, the South Rochford Road towards Deerfield Lake. There is considerable damage on that road just from hauling two or three months of summer on that Blacktop Road. Yeah, I don't know if, you know, if there was any agreements there for Lawrence County, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to avoid. I, I, I don't know what the best answer to that is, other than, I mean, you could try to time it just right, but in order to build a road, you still have to drive over the brand new section or whatever and, and it gets damaged. I mean, you might wait.
You know, we had so many ninety to hundred degree days that when they were hauling on that pavement, when it's out hot and it's more likely to be.
Right.
On New Enhood, we have a seven ton limit for axle, right?
Yep.
And that's those, that, those trucks are about five.
Yeah, there's, because there's those.
They have so many axles. But you're right, Ted. I mean, when it gets to those hot, hot, hot days, it's, it's almost worse than when we put a typical load limit on in the spring.
Yeah, yeah.
When the cross goes out.
And it's, you know, when it's cracked already, it just, it's gonna spread. It's not gonna get better. I mean, there's not a lot you can do about it. And um, I don't know. It's unfortunate and I don't know what the best answer for that would be. I mean, it, everybody deals with the same thing, I guess. It just, uh, yeah. Before a road, you know, if we're gonna rebuild something or start over, I guess we gotta catch it right away before damage occurs, I guess. I mean, I don't know how to monitor and patrol all that either. It's, it's a challenge for sure.
Any other questions, comments for the highway department? All right, thanks.
Thanks.
Um, Sheriff Wes, I don't have you on the agenda. Did you have anything to report? Okay, yeah, appreciate. Just wanted to make sure you didn't have anything to, to report. Not quite to ten o'clock yet. Um.
You've got that.
Yep, and they are here. Yep, that's gonna, that's gonna run us right up to, to that. Uh, Action for Betterment of Community, I'll let you guys uh go ahead and report. Uh, I've been allowing the outside agencies ten minutes to.
Morning at ten. My name is Kara Graebman. I'm the Executive Director of Action for the Betterment of Our Community. Uh, I took over officially with ABC in two thousand and six. So I've been around a little bit of a, you know, period of time, and ABC has grown exponentially in the last five to seven years. Um, some of the programs, if, do I, okay, yeah. So I kind of wanted to start out first with an overview of the state of South Dakota's opiate data. So opiate is kind of the next buzz thing that's come out, and everyone's diversifying money into opiate funding. Opiate overdoses is not the number one thing we are seeing here in South Dakota. The number one thing we are still seeing is methamphetamine is by far the drug of choice for people seeking substance abuse treatment services. So in twenty twenty-one, the state of South Dakota reported forty-six overdose deaths, which accounted for forty-four percent of all the drug overdoses in the state. But we also have to remember that it also accounted for seventy-five percent of the deaths across the country. It is the fifth leading cause of individuals ten to nineteen, the third leading cause of death for individuals twenty to twenty-nine, and the fourth leading cause of death among individuals thirty to thirty-nine. So a lot of this you saw in your packet. I asked the state of South Dakota, the Department of Health, to provide us some trend data so that you are able to see what Mead County specifically is seeing. Um, pay attention to the bottom left part, the overdose hotspots, the Mead County Jail, which probably is pretty common for most of us to think with the population that we deal with. But the Faith Municipal Airport kind of surprised me a little bit, that there were three overdoses in that area um during that time. Can't say what attributed to that. We can't say anything along those periods, but we know that there was an naloxin administered. So part of the plan that ABC has in place, um, if you would jump to the next one, please, thank you. We also are able to collect what's called PIN data. Um, if you're not aware of this, this is something that ABC has partners, um, law enforcement Rapid City is where we were able to secure this information. The PIN data is specifically for Sturgis and Mead County. So if you were to look at that legend, can I have you go back up one more? Sorry. If you look at the legend there, there were twenty-eight suspected overdoses in the current fiscal year of twenty twenty-four. Nine of those had to be administered Narcan. And so if you look at the different colors on the side there, none of the overdoses were fatal, thankfully, but there were some non-fatal um issues that were attributed to that. So the blue, the yellow, all of that is something that everyone has access to at any time. So I, you know, it is helpful to have access to this information. Um, you can also look at Lawrence County, how they fit, Butte County, how they fit. It allows us to kind of compare apples to apples, for lack of better word, to make sure that we're kind of in line with what everyone in the state is seeing. Of course, our two hotspots for opiate overdoses currently are Rapid City and Sioux Falls. Um, thank you. So in the current calendar year, ABC has worked with forty-eight clients who are diagnosed with an opiate use disorder. So that is their primary diagnosis. What that means is they have to meet criteria for tolerance, which is an increase of use, and withdrawal issues. It also has to impact critical life areas, which would be their physical health, their mental health, work, school, legal issues, or family. When the diagnostic statistic manual changed, it is a little bit more difficult now to meet criteria for these opiate use or any substance use disorders. Um, currently this, the data we also collect with our schools, you know, over ten percent of students report they do not believe their parents would feel it is wrong for them to use a prescription drug not prescribed for them. Seven, a little bit over seven percent of students report that they have friends that have been caught or penalized for using non-prescribed substances. And twelve point nine percent of students report that they do not feel that their friends would think it was wrong if they used a prescription drug not prescribed for them. The partnership ABC's had with the Mead School District has been pretty much since oh seven. We have data that now goes from two thousand and seven to twenty twenty-three is the last year we were able to collect this data. Um, trends are able to be seen there. We almost have twenty years of specific data to Mead School District. Um, some of the experiences and events, the great group of kids on the top right, those are our alternative school students who participate in educational services. We call it habitudes. And so they talk about critical life skills, things that work for them, things that allow them to be good citizens, goal setting. Um, the one in the middle of that was our humanity launch that was down in Stage Barn just last month. Bottom right is one of our coalition meetings. That was during one of the remodels, so you can see there's tons of kids shoved in the front of that building. On the simulation is on the bottom left there. That will be happening in the community this next week. Our suicide walk are the two ones in the middle. We have um football players that wore the teal and purple socks last year. And then the top left was the suicide walk that was organized. One of the big proponents that ABC has in place is our youth leadership team. Um, it's easy for me to come in front of you and talk about all of the community issues, but when I can put a youth in front of you to talk about all of the issues they're seeing, it makes it a lot easier to buy into some of the situations and the things they're experiencing. So some of the future endeavors ABC has, um, we came to you a couple of months ago for our tiny homes. Those are the first two tiny homes that are going to be plotted hopefully before November first. Um, the recovery community is a tier four therapeutic community. Decades of research show that this is an effective, cost-effective way for treatment providers and community members to see longer terms of recovery rates. Um, so far to date with expanding our outpatient services, the first three or four that started with us, we are seeing two and a half to three years of recovery. They live in your community. They work in your community. Um, New Dawn is looking to build a new facility in twenty thirty. Some of the successes we've seen is the remodel, our outpatient, drug-free communities opportunities. We uh wrote the Sturgis PAL, Drug-Free Communities Grant that they are operating under. We also wrote the COPS grant that secured the second school resource officer in the Sturgis Elementary School here. And then we kind of talked about our therapeutic community. So to align with what the state requested in their exhibit, um, what we kind of came to request for was this different diversified approach for community impact. So the dead-on arrival is a twenty-minute fentanyl. It's a presentation that is for the community, has discussion questions, it has a town hall um portion that goes with it. We also would like to look at overdose opiate kits placed in these hotspots that we identified. So the overdose kits have naloxin, they have a CPR mask, they even have directions on how to operate and to utilize the naloxin if you've never seen it. Um, we would like to implement the Health and Opiate Prevention Education, or the HOPE curriculum, and we would like to put that in with our health curriculum that we currently operate with Mead School Districts, along with implementing it at the alternative school. We also seek to use some of this funding to promote more case management services for our outpatient clients, more case management services for our New Dawn clients, and then to do a youth leadership opiate awareness campaign, which would be for the general population here. Um, National Overdose Day is August thirty-first, and Recovery Month is September of every year. So we would like to then now have a larger kickoff campaign, larger awareness campaigns. That is it. I threw a lot of information at you in the seven minutes.
Yeah, thank you. So, so to be clear, this, this is a funding request, so what?
This is a funding request.
Yes, so if, it uh, what are, exactly are you requesting?
We were asked to throw out an option, um, and ABC had requested sixty thousand dollars. We would be very happy with anything that the county is willing to allow us to utilize this opiate funding for. But I kind of, when we were asked, I know that it was, that was twice the amount. I think that ABC's capacity and the partners we already have in place, I think that with sixty thousand dollars, you would see a large impact in what we could do, not only in, you know, the Sturgis community, but Mead County as well. Um, we are already in Stage Barn schools. We are already down, you know, implementing work down in the county. Yes.
Which of these programs that you outlined could not be funded without county fund?
Doreen, that's a good question. I would say the case management would be the most difficult in the curriculum. Um, I think that we, you know, have enough partners in place that we could get them to sit on a panel. We could get them to participate in the town hall. We could do the awareness campaign. Um, the issue that we have as providers. The issue that we have as providers is we cannot bill or we cannot pay our staff for any service that is not clinically related. And so I only am able to bill under my license for time that I have a client sitting in front of me. And all of these other things, Medicaid, housing, vital documents, driver's license, all of these life skills don't fit in that clinical realm. So if I get out of my scope of practice and I start working on these things, it is no longer a billable service for us. And so that is just our staff deciding it's the right thing to do, which is what we're doing right now.
Which could kind of be summarized in coding, right? Federal government and all these grants and everything, everything seems to come down to a code or a stipulation or a monitoring. And then you always wonder who actually reads those files, that paperwork that takes probably more time than the actual treatment.
I really agree with you. And I also think when we look at coding now with Medicaid expansion, the case management was something that was piloted in the state of South Dakota. That money was taken back because Medicaid did not approve the coding of those services. And now you're seeing a push for peer support instead, which is wonderful, but there's also this big component that's missing. If, if people who have addiction issues were successful in all of these life skills and case management, we probably wouldn't see them when we see them. They would be able to maintain employment, fill out a resume, find daycare, where this just allows them to make life a little bit easier.
Yeah, but you know, it is so shocking when you see with, with the ones that this that you pointed out, that ten percent of the parents wouldn't really object to their kids using drugs.
Well, and if I was to go on a limb, I will tell you, the number one substance we still see is alcohol and marijuana, hands down. And that is the fear of any legalization of marijuana, as we did not do the best job with alcohol and educating and explaining long-term effects of what that looks like.
I also noticed, you know, we have this whole, what the county can fund for opiate use is all new to us. But I, but I've also noticed that there is a little caveat in there that it can also be used for overdose treatment, which makes me wonder, since our jail... Up his ears here. And sometimes we have to send inmates to the hospital because they're doing that. I'm wondering if we can also offset some of our medical costs for some of our inmates using some of this opiate money as well.
I would say you just go to Exhibit A in what the state put out. It's about twelve pages of what are approved. Activities, so yeah.
And can you believe we've never gotten that?
Oh, I could have sent you that.
Commissioner, do you have something?
Well, I was just gonna say that we were gonna give ten, twenty, thirty thousand, whatever. I'd be more comfortable knowing exactly where that money was going and how it was gonna be used for, rather than just saying, okay, we're just giving ABC thirty thousand and, you know, I'd kind of like to know specifically where the need is and how it would be used and where it would be used.
Sounds good. I don't think that would be an issue at all. And I think that we even have all of the protocol in place to provide you with six-month follow-up and a year follow-up of how your funding impacted the local community by seeing if those rates decreased, increased, you know, in our student surveys.
We don't have any action, but I'm, I'm, I'm on the page that we're talking about a twenty, twenty-five funding. Maybe everyone else is talking about a funding for this year, but I, and we did have ninety thousand budget for that, of that. We've used sixty-seven-five, I believe. Sixty-five, okay. So just, just wanted to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Well, and, and, and we got a federal allocation of two hundred and some?
About two hundred.
Yeah, I realize we haven't appropriated all of it, but I also realize we can supplement if we have to. I think since this is a new program and each of these entities is, you know, exploring how they can best use it, it would probably be best to keep everybody kind of in the same range until we get some data back.
I think that's very realistic and fair. Absolutely. And if, and if requested, we can absolutely provide, you know, we have electronic medical records for your coding, that we could pull exactly how many case management hours were provided. We can do how many curriculum, how many students attended each of those sessions, how many participants were trained in naloxin overdose. We are more than willing to provide you the data that is needed and requested to be sufficient on your end as well.
And again, you have no facility out there. You don't treat anybody that is currently going through a overdose situation or coming down, do you?
So I will give you maybe a little inside information. ABC's facilities are not medically managed. So the short answer to your question is no. The long answer to your question is ABC has credentialed staff, which includes a QMHP. So in conversations down the road with the hospital and other opportunities, we are over-inundated with mental health referrals and crisis and those. The part that we are able to help and just help the Sturgis PD with a referral thirty days ago, I don't think people are aware that if you have a license in the state of South Dakota, medically managed facilities have an emergency admit clause. So if law enforcement is dealing with the same person that is downtown, is causing the issues, they've taken him to detox four times and been brought back probably within twelve hours, they are right, they beat us back to the community. We can see the client once they are stable, and we can have them in a facility within that same day. So the gentleman I saw, he had been taken to detox four times by Sturgis Police Department. He was released that morning, detox brought him to our facility. We completed the assessment because he was stable at that point, called our friends over at Keystone Treatment Center in Canton. He was on a bus that morning, he was admitted for services at five PM that night. Not only that, then, he applied and is now at New Dawn in our community. And so as long as all of these partners are able to communicate and talk, there's enough clients for all of us to work till we are blue in the face. This problem is not going away. But if we can start to communicate better with one another, we start to see a more efficient approach instead of a siloed approach to working with people who need the services today, not three weeks from now. And law enforcement doesn't need to be spending that time in that three-week period, or housing, or, you know, so the more we can work together as a team, the more we can start to see some of these individuals get help in a quicker fashion. I believe if we gave that gentleman an opportunity where he was released from detox again, law enforcement would have been called that night again.
Oh, yeah, he'd be in our jail.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? So it sounds like we're asking for a little more information before we move forward unless someone's ready to take some action on this.
You know, I think we have as much information from ABC as we did from any of the others. I think we got a problem. And I think we have these federal funds in which to use them. I'm for anything that cuts down ultimately on law enforcement, court, jail costs, and improvement of our community as a whole. And I just hope that all this works out better than Nancy Reagan's Just Say No program. Because in many respects, it's just a new, updated, just don't say no. I noticed Pat smiled. What do you think, Pat? Here, I want you to comment. Come on.
Pat West, Meade County Sheriff. She is a hundred percent accurate when she talks about methamphetamine being the number one problem that we have. Opioids scares the heck out of me. And I'm a huge proponent of the prevention that she writes, she's got on the documents. Education, these kids don't understand, you know, they may take some prescription pills out of grandpa, grandma's cabinet and use it one time, but anymore, this stuff is available on the internet. And it's all fake prescription pills that are sprayed with fentanyl. And one might do what they want it to do, but the next pill that they exposed to is gonna kill them. So I think education is huge, and I'd be, I'm extremely supportive of this and providing funding to them on that, so. My two cents.
Any other questions for Sheriff West, until he runs away? He's still in the room, so it's all fair. Questions, comments? Sounds like Commissioner Creed is ready to offer a motion.
Well, I will, I will make a motion to fund this in twenty-twenty-five. I, I think, aren't we going to be putting together all these programs later in December and do the actual funding proposals for that?
You have currently approved sixty-five thousand dollars worth of opioid money to be distributed in January of twenty-twenty-five.
And we budgeted ninety thousand.
We budgeted ninety.
So we would have to supplement in December sometime, if, what I'm, for next year, what I'm trying to say, I'd like to get them, give them thirty thousand as well. But the only way we can do that is if we add five thousand dollars to the budgeted number. Which we could really supplement that at, at any time.
At some point in twenty-twenty-five, you could do a budget, you could do a budget transfer from contingency, or you could do a budget supplement.
So the stuff where I, I'm not gonna support them getting that.
No, they would not be getting in excess. They would be getting, in essence, the same amount, with the exception of, we...
I think Teen Court is the only one that didn't get thirty, isn't it? We have Compass Point and Northern Hills Drug Court, both at thirty thousand each, and we have Teen Court at five thousand.
At five thousand, okay.
I haven't heard the motion yet.
Yeah, that's, did you make the motion to approve thirty thousand dollars for, for ABC?
Right, which will necessitate a supplement or contingency move in twenty-twenty-five of five thousand dollars from our allocation of two hundred and twenty-one, is it?
At present, we have two forty-five, but that is without the ninety thousand being taken out of, that we have budgeted for twenty-five.
I mean, we have ample funds, which would be a similar allocation as the other two main, main facilities.
My understanding, we're not gonna get these funds every year.
No, but I believe we're gonna be getting these funds for the next either five to seven years based on which funding source.
We have a motion on the floor to approve thirty thousand dollars for twenty-twenty-five, to throw in the twenty-twenty-five budget, thirty thousand dollars. Do I have a second for ABC?
I'll second for discussion. So I think Dalby brings up a good point. The, and nothing against, you know, what you guys are doing, I think it's great. I think that we have to be accountable for the money that we bring in, coming in. So I think getting the report back is a key piece. And then also, you can't guarantee that you're gonna get funds every year. I know that's not your ask today, but going forward for everybody.
Yes, and I think we are very well aware that that opiate funding will cease once that settlement ceases. You know, that that is a very vivid reality of this.
I'm going to just...
Mark this in the book.
I'm just, I'm just gonna, I'm...
That's your predecessor show up in six years and say you're cutting our budget.
The chair's gonna go ahead and move to amend this motion. I want to move to the amendment to be approval for twenty-five thousand dollars, which would be in line with, with what we budgeted. That would get us to that ninety thousand dollar level. I'll just make that motion, then I'll state why after, if I get a second. I'm gonna move to amend to approve twenty-five thousand versus the thirty thousand. Second, so it's going to die for a lack of second.
I'll second it.
With second, and the reason I'm doing so is, is, I don't, I don't agree with going over budget, especially since we just passed it for one thing. The second thing is I don't see, I don't think we can authorize, it will be the same commissioners, except for one, I don't think we can authorize them to take it out of contingency for twenty-five right now, which that would have to be done. Maybe it can be done, but maybe it can't. But I don't think it's appropriate for us today to go over that budget amount set. Or I would keep, that's why I'd wanna keep it within that ninety thousand. We could, next year, in, in twenty-twenty-five, I wouldn't disagree if they came back and asked for more funds, then we could ask for some more money possibly, but I don't think we can right now.
If you're ready for some discussion?
Yeah, discussion, I just, that was, actually, yeah, the guy that gives the motion is supposed to be the first one to give discussion, so that's what I did. So go ahead, Commissioner.
Took that all down as your motion.
Yeah.
Oh, she did? Hope not.
Well, you know, in response to my first comments, I saw some pictures of some little cabins on there that you guys do. So, you know, I'm in agreement with Pat. I think, you know, if we're, I guess I don't wanna, I don't wanna vote to spend our money building little houses, but if we're spending the money...
We wouldn't go to that. It will be classed in a separate line item that will be provided back to you guys. It will cover the identified activities in there.
Yeah, if we're spending money to educate the kids and counsel and stuff, then I'm...
These houses were already, prior to us coming to you, were something that was funded with Board of Directors approval and Vekervich funding.
So our funding wouldn't be going?
No, sir, nope.
So that's just to kind of show you an overview of everything that ABC...
Okay, so that's why, that's why I made my original comments, 'cause I wasn't sure where our money was going if we, you know...
Yes, sir. So, so we were kind of given parameters of what was expected from the presentation, and those were the parameters that we followed. So if, you know, I, ABC has nothing but transparency with how we would spend your funding. It can be, the idea we had is it would be classed in a separate class under our overall budget, so that if ever requested, the commission would be privy to see exactly how this money is spent.
And that, I think, whatever passes, we would require a report, typically twice a year.
Mr. Chair, we, Meade County will be requiring that everybody, that every agency that is receiving opioid funding does sign an agreement before getting the check in January, because Meade County is obligated to give a report because it is money, settlement money given to us.
So if it's discovered that some of this money is not used for what the purpose was, we could...
And, and prior to that report, we could easily provide you a budget as to what would be spent under what area.
The way I look at this, like it or not, we have a huge drug problem here. We also are fortunate to have ABC and Compass Point. Few communities have two facilities like this. ABC has spent almost two decades getting familiarized with students and young kids in our community, and have grown and have an influence over them... and have grown and have an influence over them, and hopefully, over some of their decision-making. They certainly can't take the role of a parent, but they can give them options. And that is why we're not talking about Mead County taxpayers' dollars, we're talking about Mead County's children and their futures, and keeping them out of our jails. And that's why I believe that they play just as an important role in this whole disaster that has befallen our country, as Compass Point and the others. And an extra five thousand dollars out of a twenty-some million dollar budget for next year is a drop in the bucket, but can make a substantial change, perhaps, in just even one kid's life.
Um, if I may, I, I'm not, I don't, I'm not-
I know you're not against-
The, the motion to amend was not, not, the five thousand dollars, I stated the reasons, I, I don't believe we can do the five thousand dollars, and I, I have nothing against this program, and I think it's a great program, believe me. I've got some children in school, so I'm as concerned about this as probably anybody. But, uh, with that said, I, the reasons I stated before, I think the five thousand, I think we, we have to stay within our recommended budget at this point. Um, in January one of twenty twenty five, if there's an opportunity for some more money, I think then it would be appropriate for that commission to recommend out of contingency. I don't see how we can recommend the twenty twenty five's commission to take money out of contingency. I know it's, maybe we should've budgeted a hundred thousand dollars, that was a mistake we made last week, or last meeting, maybe. But with that said, it's gonna be tough, in my opinion, to go over that ninety thousand dollars today.
Well, I think that we're gonna ultimately be probably changing all of that, once we find out what all some of that money can be used for. And I am really interested in knowing if it can help deflect some of our medical costs associated with opioid overdoses, because those expenses are high.
I don't disagree with you, and the, the talk about possibly a fund was, was, is, is probably in the works and would be appropriate, but right now, this is the, what we have to live with for, for what we have. If, if we would've known some of this two, three months ago, we possibly could've put more money into that. We also know, as Commissioner Wazorick pointed out, that it's two hundred and forty thousand now. If we, if we go with all of this, it'll be down to a hundred and fifty, there is money coming in, but we don't know for how long. So if we, if, if we, how long then, Commissioner Creed?
Five, seven years, depending upon which fund it comes out of. I, I think we can get an amortization schedule on how, uh, um, how extensive it is, but I am very confident we're gonna be getting the same amount next year. It's part of the overall, um, court, um, settlement.
So nonetheless, it's, it's a limited amount of time, so there's all these good programs, I fear that, 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 uh, we will be funding and at some point scratching our head a little bit as to how to keep funding them. So that's something else to keep in mind, but it, five, seven years always sounds like a long time till we're up against that. I've talked too long as, as Chair, so is there any other comments to the motion? The motion is, uh, which was an amended motion, to, uh, recommend funding at twenty-five thousand dollars to ABC. Any other discussion to that motion?
So, motion to make the amendment?
No, the motion, the mo, the amendment, excuse me, original motion was to fund this at thirty thousand.
Right.
Um, I amended that to fund it at twenty-five thousand.
Well, yeah, you, so you, so, uh, vote on the amendment, and then you-
Voting on the amendment.
Then vote on whatever the result there is.
Yes, yes, so we're voting on the amendment, which is twenty-five thousand. Is that clear? Motion is to amend the original motion. Any other discussion to that amended motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I knew I'd be the only no.
So that now changes the original motion. The motion now is to fund ABC at twenty-five thousand. Motion on the floor, is any discussion or questions to this motion? Or now, the motion is to fund them at twenty-five thousand, I'm just trying to be clear, so everyone's clear on what we're doing. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Uh, nay.
Motion carries with-
Whatever.
One nay, I think.
One nay, yeah, well, you say same sign, so I don't know if I have to say aye or say something else.
Oh, yeah, there is one nay.
Yeah, it's a nay, so.
Yep, okay. So thank you guys for coming in today.
Thank you. Goodbye.
Brings us to our ten o'clock scheduled items, uh, we first have an improvement of section line right of way, uh, Brandon Jessica Lindley. Discuss this a few times, uh, there was, uh, Ms. Vegg, give it to you, give us an overview, quick overview, we, this is, we kinda have this one down.
Yes, so, last meeting, um, we met on the section, on the section line vacate, or vacate, and the motion was to continue it, to have the exhibits reformatted, and the wording cleared up, and all the drawings to match. Um, we combined the north and the south side of the section, west and east side of the section line, the two culverts that are next to each other, they are now one easement agreement, or one continuous easement, instead of two separate. Um, Mr. Wazorick has reviewed the legal, the legals, or the document, legal document, and it is edited, um, all the drawings match, the construction easements, keep going, Rhea.
I'll make a clarification on there, I reviewed one document, made the edits I thought were necessary on all the easements, though the edits were only made on two of the easements, though.
The ones that submitted?
Yeah, the, the last two are, don't, don't run to the county.
West. So these are the two that were edited, um-
Those are the two diagrams that were-
Diagrams, these are for the permanent major drainage that the county would have access to maintain if we need to do the culverts. Keep going. That's the same for this one, this is the west side of the road. And this, these easements are for the cul-de-sac, which have no culvert system.
Right, but they're not to the county, which in our last discussion, we said those need to be to the county too, because if the county, that road, that cul-de-sac ends up, up there for who knows how long, then the county won't be able to do anything or provide, it's only the individual. So, so maybe there's a miscue, because I only made the edits on one easement, I didn't think I'd have to rewrite all four easements for the proponents here. I said these same eas, you know, I did not communicate directly with Shannon, so maybe there's a communication, but I, but on my email said the same changes on all easements.
Yeah, I think that we, I missed that, so. And which can easily be changed, but I would, I just took the changes as which ones we needed, so.
Well, at the last meeting, we said these, the, the county needs these easements, all four, and we made it very clear at the last meeting, so.
Yep. Now, I don't know how Tanya took it, but I think, I could, yeah.
Yeah, I, I-
We can go through and change on all four.
Right, and the communication-
But I didn't catch that, I just looked at-
The communication might be on my side, but that was the discussion at the last meeting, that the county needs to be on all four of these, because if, if that cul-de-sac's there for the next fifty years, who knows? It might only be there for two years, maybe somebody pushes it on and nobody cares. But, you know, you know, I, I don't know that for a fact, I don't know how that's gonna work. Um, and so, those, I, I would, and the only reason I'm kinda jumping in, I apologize for interrupting kinda in the middle of it, is, is I wanted to make that clarification, given something that was said, so there wasn't any confusion on that.
So, I guess my question is, I thought the easements were for the culverts, that extended to private property. If we needed to maintain the culverts, extensions into private property, that's where Mead County would step in. The road is being dedicated as a public access easement, the entire-
It's being dedicated as a public road.
Public right of way, right?
Public right of way, yeah. And part of that public right of way is-
So why would the culvert, I guess I don't understand why the cul-de-sac is part of the public right of way being dedicated, the easements go past that dedication, so I have-
Is that being dedicated, he's got public access easement on it, he's not dedicating it, that's an easement. They're not dedicating the cul-de-sac, they're only dedicating, you only have the section line, and that goes outside the section line, is the way I read these maps. They're on Shannon.
That's how I understand it.
But doesn't the county have the right to use public access easement?
That, that's not how your easements read.
No, well, that's what we're looking for direction.
Well, and, and-
But I didn't, maybe I misunderstood that all of them.
Yeah, 'cause-
You made edits on one that all four needed to be, read the same, so.
I, they, they all need to run to four counties, you know, um, me. Yeah, so, so you're not, you're doing an easement for those, correct?
Yes, correct, yep.
And so, I think the county should be on those easements also.
Okay. Yep, no, that's clearly a misunderstanding on my part, so, we can, I'll make those adjustments and come back.
I'll, I get a question, the, the cul-de-sac, public access easements, those are written correctly?
No, so that's the ones, 'cause, and I, it's, it's on me, so like, what, I get the, I get the easements, you know, um, I'm a county commissioner, I shouldn't be, have to be the lawyer for the proponents here to actually draft these, right? Um, and so I changed the, I changed only the first one, and I said the same changes for all. Now, that, the miscommunication, I think, occurred, and I'm gonna put it on me too, as I should've said for all four, because that was our conversation at the last time, is why this says public access easement. It only grants it to, um, grants perpetual subject, hereby acknowledge, hereby grants perpetual public subject to. I see where you're going, Shannon, is you're saying this is a public access easement, but it doesn't grant it to anybody.
It doesn't grant it to the general public? I mean, if you give up that right, and you sign that document, it, you're giving up your right to the general public, I guess in my eyes, but.
Back down.
I don't know, I'm-
But I'm definitely, I mean, we want these correct in everybody's eyes, so I'm definitely willing to, you know, just relook at them, and then we can get back on the next agenda, if needed.
Well, I mean, I'm not asking you to get back on the next agenda, I'm, I'm more concerned, you know, I'm more concerned that it's clear that, you know, we run into this all the time, is we get these things called public access easements, nobody knows has the right to use them. I, I don't, I'm fine with, I'm fine, I would prefer, my ask, I guess, is on a public access easement, it's a general public access easement, and it also grants to Mead County the right to use them. Um, and it's a successor's in the signs, so there's not, you know, 'cause we just, we just went through this whole thing, Edmont Platt, says public access easement, and then we get this argument, well, no, who gets to use it, who gets to say what goes on there?
Yeah, but my take on the whole time was the general public, you know, that's the way I looked at it, in that discussion, so. I don't know if anybody, maybe a landowner that has opposition is gonna try to say something different, but I don't know if they really know.
So how are you, so is your idea, 'cause we're not, you're not plating that land?
No, no, 'cause really, in a sense, we're all thinking that's gonna be, hopefully, that's gonna get vacated someday as a, as a public easement, once that road goes through, then we'll just have driveways coming off that. So if that, that section line gets improved and extended, that easement that we're creating now for the public's basically gonna get vacated during that, once you, if you guys approve of further, you know, extension of improvement, so. So it would no longer be needed, so we're just trying to have that in place, so the general public has the right to go down that road and turn around on the cul-de-sac and-
Yeah, so I'm, you know, generally like what I see is the DOT, you're actually specifically granting me that.
Yes, yep.
Okay, so why should the counties be different?
Um, I, I see county as general public, but, I mean, why would I be different than, or you guys be different than Ted and I, or general public?
Well, so, I mean, if you grant, but, so if you grant it to the state, they're not the general public. You grant a public right of way to the DOT.
All right, I'll, I'll add the county, don't matter.
Yeah, I mean, I don't-
We can have this argument all day, who, and who would not, so, but, but right now, the maintenance is all on the owner, it's not on the county, so.
I agree.
And the county's not gonna do the maintenance on it, so.
No, but if we get to a situation where somebody's not maintaining, has to go in there and maintain.
Right, yep.
Public safety issue.
Yep, so.
So, yeah, so, I, you know, I don't, I think we have to be, given the fights and arguments, I think we have to start designating some of this stuff a little bit cleaner and be-
Sure. But if I would've hired in another attorney to write this easement, they probably wouldn't put Mead County in there, just saying. So, I think this first document that we're getting ready to do for this, to just make it specific the way we want it, and then, next time, we don't have to have this conversation, so.
Well, and-
Which is my recommendation, so, that's why I'm open to changing when it-
We're talking about doing a standard form, that require, that has at least the basics requirement for it.
One thing I would comment as well is the exhibits for the culvert ones, they, the exhibits still say the described property agreed, agreed to allow Brandon Lindley to use, utilize the area described on exhibit, and I know that the legal document is the text, but then the exhibit says something for a different agreement, but I think they should match.
So, basically, general public?
Yeah, whatever, whatever the, the words are that we decide.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
But the agreement, yeah, whatever shows here.
Yep.
That one says to the public, but then, if you go to the culvert ones, they say to the-
Oh, okay, okay, oh. Yep.
Is, I do gotta ask, since this was scheduled hearing, uh, is anyone for the public here to speak on this? Anyone wish to speak on this? Not seeing anyone from general public that wishes to speak, so I'll close public testimony. Uh, Commissioner Wazorick, you have any suggestions?
Um, yeah, so, Richard pointed out that I was the last meeting. I had the copies I had gotten, they had parts, they've since done that. Um, Shannon, I should've called. But the, uh, I think what you do, I think calls out both the grant, the grantees, so it'd be Brandon Lindley and, and assigns, probably, he where he's looking.
Yep, I do, yep.
And then at, uh, cul-de-sac easement, specifically to call out, it's to the general public. Um, you know, I said at the last meeting, I think we should be, um, armed when both don't have to try to reinvent the wheel. Good to keep this one.
Yeah, was that in the form of a motion to-
No, here, if you want me to make a motion, I can, I'll make a motion to approve section of the section line.
Please speak in your mic, Mr. Wazorick, so we can-
Yes, Father. Um, hey, um, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve subject two on the permanent major drainage easement the exhibits have added under the agreement part, all the grantees and include successors- have added under the agreement part, all the grantees and include successors and assigns. And that the public access easement specifically call out as for the public access and for the county. Um, and the agreement, the... I think the agreement's probably okay there, Rich.
I think the agreement was probably okay.
Yeah, because it just says that he's dedicating that as part of the easement. So that would be my motion.
I'll second that motion. I know it's kind of a trying time to do these things, Shannon, but thank you for-
No, I understand, yep.
So, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Uh, the motion, uh, just to, basically to approve this with those changes, is that correct, Commissioner Mizork?
Yeah, subject to those changes, and of course, executing these.
Between, uh, Ms. Vig and Rhea and Chris, do you have those changes listed, can you? Well, yeah, but that, that sometimes becomes, this needs to be very clear, so, uh, I do hope you three could work together on this motion.
And, and you will read and sign off that those changes are made before, uh, everything proceeds?
Before I sign, yeah. Any other questions, comments on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon, for, it's been a work in progress. Uh, next up is the revision of easements, a portion of a major drainage easement.
Morning, Shane Matt.
This was brought up, brought to me to vacate a portion of the major drainage easements for Pleasant Valley Estates Phase Two, lot sixteen, seventeen, eighteen of block two, lot nine and ten of block one. Parasite has included in a memorandum some drainage analysis for sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen of block two. Lot nine and ten does not have one, it's pretty evident on photos that the utility company, the power company would like to retain their own easement. Oakley Lane. And that's the pasture, that's for easements sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen of block two. Detail on that one, on his analysis on that. And this is the first attempt at writing a vacation of a major drainage easement for this type of a project.
Angles of the-
So the exhibit portion that's been, uh, removed is the hatched area. The remaining exhibit remains in place as recorded per the plat. Existing drainage that stays are setback rules for major drainage easements and building permits still obtained to all these easements. So it's vacated, and the line will just come off the new vacation line, and then you still have the twenty-five foot setback. So we are not eliminating any setbacks. Just a first attempt at trying to do something like this, and any input?
Your, your mic's not really picking up.
Sorry. Shane can explain the rest of the project, but this is the first attempt at doing a drainage easement like this, to vacate a portion of it.
Gotta keep it pretty simple.
I don't think your mic's-
Hey, turn your mic on.
Well, um, lot nine and ten, um, the, the only reason that we had over-conservatively estimated the easement just because it was, it's about, if you, as you can see, they're seventy-five foot as per the drawing, but it's, the actual center of the drainage is about twenty feet off the south line, so it's about fifty foot, fifty-five foot off the road. And we just went all the way up to the right of way just as a simplification pro- process. Nothing was ever gonna be built there, we didn't think it was gonna be an issue. We found out late, and we asked West River Electric to review the plans, they did multiple times. Then they came back when they finally were constructing it and said, oh, we can't build a, build our, our, uh, it's a pol- it's a company policy, we can't put our utilities in a drainage easement even though it's high and dry. And so, um, you know, out of, out of the drainage, and so, that's the reason we're coming back and, and taking it out. It is clearly outside of the drainage, um, it's not within it. It was just a simplification process as part of our designing our plans. And we could've made it narrower to begin with, but it would've had a little strip of non-easement, so then you just got that much more complication of, of trying to lay it out, so that's the reason this one. I think this one's pretty straightforward, it was just, we had simplified, oversimplified it, and, um, and now the West River Electric needs it out of there, so, so that it can be, uh, they can't be in, in, in that easement, so... Um, that's the reason we're requesting for these first two lots, lot nine and ten on Oakley Lane. The second one, um, which is, um, I don't know if you can scroll up. And you can show, hey, if you real quick, if you wanna see anything on nine and ten, you can see that roadway, there is a photo there. Um, this photo here with the, or, uh, not that one, sorry, the one with the road. Right there, that's, that's the shoulder, you can see at the shoulder of the road, basically, the first twelve feet is where that is, that is at. Um, then, and you can see the channel way over to the, to the left side of that photo. Um, so that, that's one, I think this, that's real straightforward. Um, the next one is, um, there is, it's a little hard to see from this on an overall, but uh, no, let's keep going, that's, that's the original, now this one. This one, we had a hundred, there's a very, very shallow overland swale, I'm gonna call it, and I probably, in retrospect, I wish I wouldn't even called it a major drainage. It probably could've not been called a major drainage. Um, but we are where we're at, we're doing with what we've got. Literally, it's a one percent slope along this whole thing, and it's, and literally, if, if it spreads during the hot- and your requirement's only say the twenty-five year storm, but I sized it to a hundred just to be, just to be safe. Literally, it's gonna be six inches deep, to give you an idea. Six inches deep, guys, that's, that's all the deeper it's gonna be, but it's gonna spread over about sixty-five feet. So that water in that area, um, so we've, we've recap, we did the re- we did all the calcs, and we had done this again. We had simplified, or, um, maybe over-conservatively estimated this, again, to make it simple for, for, uh, plating purposes. But once we found out about the twenty-five foot offset, it kinda became a little encumbrance, uh, encumbering. So we wanted to come back and get this revised, and, and we talked with old Tanya, she said this was probably the best way to do it for this portion. And if we had one, like one lot, we would maybe do, uh, look at a variance for the setback requirements on speci- on a specific lot if we had it, but because there was three lots that were affected by this, we thought this was the best approach. So with that being said, even that sixty-five foot would give you plenty of room if they ever decided they wanted to build an actual channel, um, a man-made channel. There's plenty of room, the channel would take up about twenty-five feet, and then you'd still have twenty feet on each side to, for, for construction purposes, et cetera. So there's more than significant amount of room. Um, we just wanted to give a little more room and options for the landowner to build on, uh, on this property. So I think it's pretty straightforward, I, I, I am totally in support of it, and I mean, I think, I think I was overly conservative before, um, and then with the additional twenty-five foot, we just, I had to get rid of some of it, and so, um, so the landlord can, can fit his house on, especially if they wanna be on the back of the lot. So, that's all we're asking for, I, I don't, if anybody's got any questions, and you can look at the fo- the one photo of the fence line, shows you how much, um, shows you, basically, the channel is just to the left of that fence line. It is right there, that's how, there is no defined channel per se. It is a overland, everything flows here down to that fence, flows this way, and it's just very subtle. So, that's what it is.
Thank you, is, uh, before I go to commission questions, comments, is there anybody from the public here to, to, uh, like to speak to this? Not seeing anybody from the public, so I'll close public testimony on this. Commission, comments, questions?
Uh, Tanya, was this on the agenda yesterday for planning?
Yes, it was on the planning agenda yesterday.
What was the decision there?
Passed unanimously.
It passed to you guys.
I get my way in one knee.
Yeah, I was-
Was there a knee?
We, I haven't read through all of it.
I didn't catch a knee if it's-
It was passed, there was, there, it passed, uh, I looked that up last night.
Was there a knee, if I missed it, I missed it then.
I was thinking it was on there, but I followed along.
Any other questions, comments from the commission?
As long as it passed, I'll make a motion to, um, approve... Uh, make a motion to approve the vacation of the major drainage easement.
Motion and a second on the floor, just, uh, just, it was passed unanimously yesterday, so... Any discussion to this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Tanya, this was the first one- We have a five-minute break, yep.
This was the first one we've had to do where we had a major drainage easement vacation. I know all, I don't remember any.
We're gonna take about a ten-minute break. That, any tea, tea?
Brings us down to commission. Uh there's really nothing in communicate, I don't believe, is there?
Okay, and then the other item was moved till after exact, so brings us down to the consent calendar. Thing on the consent calendar like to discuss if not uh, gain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent.
I'll second.
Motion in a second to approve the cons- consent calendar. Man, I'm trouble talking today. I need discussion to that motion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same. Oh, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Brings us down to executive session. Uh entertain a motion to go into executive session for legal personnel and contract.
Make a motion to go into legal for um. Yeah.
Yeah.
Going to exec for legal personnel and contract.
By the way, where's our city at?
When you have a motion, we need a second. A motion and a second to go into executive session for legal personnel and contract. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. What were you gonna say, Drake?
I said, where is our county at?
Doesn't do me any good to give a speech.
Well, yeah, that's... That's all we gotta do is take the video off next time.
Yeah, yeah, that'd shut me right up.
Video's off, Delbit.
Oh, I'm done.
Okay, we have agenda item G2. Allocation of 2021 Dodge Ram pickup for permanent use.
So, uh, my comments on the... So this pickup came to us kind of this tragic circumstances. Took his own life. It's basically treated like abandoned property where the courts ordered it to be handed over to the county. I've struggled somewhat with this and I think after talking to some people, I think probably the best route to take is to declare it surplus and then use those funds potentially to pull... To come back into highway and to sheriff's office to help them with their funds for vehicles rather than try to make a vehicle fit. Use it as a supplement to add to. So I'm gonna make a motion that we declare it surplus and follow the surplusing statutes. If people think that's in line or I'd make a request that we schedule it to be declared surplus. We have it down as allocate the use. I think declaring it surplus at that time at this point would probably fit within that general definition. Unless somebody has objection to that, I could do...
Would it be appropriate to set a minimum?
Well, if you... There's... I'm saying to follow the surplusing statutes which I believe would require some valuation process. And then that we would... It was gonna have to come back to us for us to set up how we want to follow. I'm just making a motion that we go ahead and begin the process to declare it surplus.
Thank you. You have a motion, we... Do I have a second to that motion? Motion and a second on the floor to declare... To start the process to surplus this vehicle. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Um, I believe this completes our agenda and...